Welcome to the January regular meeting of the Calgary Police Commission. I would like to call this meeting to order and ask that everyone ensure your microphones are muted until you need to speak. My name is Sean Cornet and I am Chair of the Commission. I'm joined today by Commissioners Amtel Siddiqui, Marilyn North-Pagan, Susan Mallon, Kim Lynch Proctor, Heather Campbell, Theresa Rossell, TJ Zhang will join us in a little while, Jeff French, Shari Nissen Jordan, and Councillors Jennifer Weiness and Raj Dollywall. We're also pleased to welcome two special guests joining us today as part of the Canadian Association Chiefs of Police Mentorship Program, Superintendent Andrew Chan from the Vancouver Police Department and Superintendent Cameron McBride from the Saskatoon Police Department will be observing today's meeting. We welcome you both and hope your time here provides some useful insights for you to take back. The Calgary Police Service representatives are led by Chief Constable Mark Newfeld. He will be joining us just in a few minutes and I would ask Exo Brar to please introduce those who will speak today.
Thanks Chair. As you mentioned, Chief Newfeld just finishing up a meeting with the Calgary Public Safety and Community Task Force. He'll join us shortly. And thank you for welcoming our two guests from Vancouver and Saskatoon. Today presenting, we will have Inspector Sheldon Scott, Detective Zane Kelly and Strategist Jason Archibald, along with Deputy Chief Paul Cook, Deputy Chief Chad Topic, and joining us online Deputy Chief Katie McCollum.
Great, thank you. And thank you for everyone for being here. For those who are not familiar with our role, the Calgary Police Commission is a body of ten community members and two city councillors appointed by city council. We provide independent citizen governance and oversight of the Calgary Police Service on behalf of all Calgarians. To protect the political neutrality of the police, Alberta's Police Act requires that the police chief report directly to us instead of city council. We provide direction to the service through the chief, police policies, monitoring of the police complaint process, and approval of how the police budget is spent. Today is one of eight regular meetings we have each year to openly discuss police governance and oversight matters with the service's leadership and to hear from the public. We also have several private monthly committee meetings where commissioners work more directly with the service on various matters that cannot be discussed publicly. Our commission meeting today is taking place on the traditional territory of the Nitsitapi made up of the Zigziga, Bagani, and Gynae First Nations, the Arahia Nakota comprised of Chiniki, Berespa, and Westley First Nations, and the Tutsina First Nation. These are the people who made treaty with the Crown, forming Treaty VII Territory. The city of Calgary is also homeland to the historic Northwest Métis and to Métis Nation of Alberta Region III. We are committed to doing our part to address the inequity and intergenerational trauma caused by past and current wrongs to support reconciliation with all Indigenous people in our community. Our commission also condemns racism and prejudice in all forms and is committed to being anti-racist. We stand in solidarity with our colleagues, families, and citizens who are Black, Indigenous, or other people of color. For those joining us for the first time, allow me to provide a brief overview of the meeting format, which can be a little complicated. The public session of this meeting is being livestreamed and a recording will be posted online so we can make it available to those unable to attend. There will be several presentations from the Calgary Police Service, commission members, and commission staff. Commissioners will have the chance to ask questions or make comments after each one. Once we've completed the presentations, we will move to the public participation portion of the meeting. Those who are registered to speak will then be called by name and will have a chance to either ask a question or make a presentation for our consideration. Following the public participation, we will close the public portion of the meeting with the chief and I taking questions from the media. Everyone is welcome to observe the media availability, but only media can participate. To start our agenda items, I will now call for declarations of pecuniary interest or conflict of interest from the commissioners. Hearing and seeing no declarations, I will now ask for approval of the agenda. Does any member of the commission wish to request an amendment to the agenda? Seeing no requests, I will now ask for approval of the consent agenda. For those viewing today's meeting, the consent agenda is a list of routine items and reports that all commissioners agree can be accepted without more discussion or a separate vote. Does any member of the commission wish to request an item on the consent agenda be brought forward for discussion? Hearing and seeing no requests, I declare both the agenda and consent agenda approved as presented. And now I'll provide my report. For this report, I would like to start by acknowledging that the next month we will be celebrating is Black History Month. Over the past few years, our commission, the Calgary Police Service, and our city have been facing the truth that systemic racism is still present in our institutions. We've made a commitment to do better and to ensure that we would become more equitable, inclusive, and anti-racist. One important aspect of this work is to better understand the experiences and history of everyone in our community, especially those who have not traditionally been given the opportunity to tell their story. I would like to encourage everyone to take some time in February to learn more about the contributions and experiences of Black Canadians throughout our nation's history. Today's meeting is the first public meeting in two months, but there's been a lot happening behind the scenes since our November meeting. I had the honour of being invited to participate in a World Cafe organised as part of the service's new approach to leadership development. It was nice to meet so many current and future leaders within the service and we had excellent discussions on how they contribute to the organisation's effectiveness. I was also honoured to attend the annual menorah lighting at City Hall to celebrate an important holiday with Calgary's Jewish community. Members of our commission also attended two recruit graduations and our new commissioners had an opportunity to get some firsthand experience with the Chief Crowfoot Learning Centre to learn more about how officers are trained. Congratulations to all new officers and thank you to those in the CCLC and firearms unit that facilitated our commissioners' visit. Last weekend, our commission held our annual retreat to set the course for this coming year. We received some outstanding training and were able to have great discussions about our priorities for this coming year, a big one of which is expanding our public engagement efforts. And of course, I can't talk about the last two months without mentioning the province's long overdue update of the Police Act. Our commission was very pleased to see amendments to the Police Act passed in late December. We did our best to review the amendments and submit our feedback to the province in the week the amendments were put before the legislature and hoped to have input into the implementation process. We believe the province has made some good changes to the Police Act, the most significant of which is creating an independent agency to investigate complaints about police officers. Many other provinces abandoned the practice of police investigating their own long ago and we're very happy to see Alberta catching up in this regard. The new act will also allow police services to address workplace and performance issues using modern human resource practices instead of the current quasi judicial hearing process. This will allow the Calgary Police Service to more quickly, equitably, and effectively address problematic workplace behaviour when it rises. However, there is still a lot of work that needs to be done. Our commission continues to advocate with the province to ensure that the regulations connected to the new Police Act, which are being drafted now, are developed in consultation with those of us who will be most affected by the new rules. Many of the things that have undermined the public's trust in police accountability are not problems with the previous Police Act, but problems with the connected regulations. The regulations define what counts as police misconduct, outline potential consequences for misconduct, set limits on when an officer's disciplinary record can be considered, and create rules for when an officer can be relieved from duty or fired. Our commission has a list of things we want addressed in the new regulations and the service has a team of people working internally to create a list of the regulatory changes that would help modernise the way police are accountable to the communities that they serve. Our commission is also closely watching for details on how the new independent police complaints body will be resourced. We have seen resourcing challenges at the Alberta Serious Incident Response Team, ASERT, create multi-year gaps between fatal police encounters and the public learning the results of the investigations into them. It has undermined the public's trust in policing and placed immense long-term stress on officers for no reason. It has been nice to see ASERT get a boost in resources that has started to shorten the timelines and we hope the funding model for the new agency will set them up for success by learning from the mistakes made with ASERT. We look forward to working with Minister Ellis and his team to make sure the new regulations and the implementation of the Police Act amendments make Alberta a leader in police governance and oversight. Finally, I want to acknowledge some of the good work that the members of the service have done over the last two months. As a commission, we set priorities for them and I always enjoy sharing examples of how they've met and exceeded those expectations. Our city has sadly seen four more homicides since our last meeting, including one on New Year's Day. These incidents take a toll on our community and the officers that respond and investigate them. However, we have seen over and over that these officers still investigate them with the utmost professionalism. Another area where the service is working hard is in domestic violence. Our city saw a 20% reduction in domestic violence calls last year, which is in part thanks to the tireless work, excuse me. Our city saw a 20% reduction in domestic violence calls last year, which is in part thanks to the tireless work that the city does, the service does, with community partners to intervene in families dealing with this problem. But officers involved in this area are not only professional and effective, they also do their job with compassion. This Christmas, they organised and adopted a family programme that allowed staff across the service and even our commission to put presents under the trees of families the unit has worked with this past year. The service's traffic section has also been busy. In addition to laying charges in two fatal collisions and one hit and run, they proactively took dangerous drivers off the road by partnering with the RCMP, Alberta Sheriffs, and the Tutsina Nation Police Service to conduct holiday checkstops. In total, the service took 169 impaired drivers off our roads in December. Investigators have also laid significant fraud charges in a few high-profile cases, made significant drug and weapon seizures, made several major auto theft arrests, and continued the work to stop crime and disorder downtown and on transit. The service has also continued to work with the community to solve some of the challenges we face as a city. A partnership with Cal Tire and Stiffer Fines, council just approved with support from service, helped curb catalytic converter thefts. The service also partnered with Marlborough Mall for their annual shop with a cop programme where officers positively connect with children in their community. And as happens in life, the service has also suffered losses to family members of the close-knit community that the police service is. We offer our condolences to all of those affected. And finally, the service welcomed new members to its anti-racism action committee and acknowledged the impacts of the Goliath Bathhouse raid 20 years ago, both of which are continuing the work of changing how traditionally marginalised groups are served by the police. Thank you to everyone who has worked so hard to serve our city. With that, I will conclude my chair's report. We will now ask the Calgary Police Service to start their presentations with an update on the planning for the 2023 World Petroleum Congress, which is coming to Calgary in September. While police commissions are not involved in operational decisions, the police, we have a responsibility to ensure that Calgary Police Service has the appropriate plans, policy direction, and resourcing in place to manage significant events. The high-profile World Petroleum Congress is going to have significant impact on Calgarians and will require substantial police resources to protect public safety. We have been discussing these impacts with the service for the past year and are happy to be hearing more today on the work you are doing. So I will ask if you could please go ahead with your presentation.
Thanks Chair Cornet. I'll just do some quick introductions of those who are presenting. We have with us today Jason Archibald, who's a business strategist and the project manager for WPC 2023. He brings a wealth of project management expertise to the table and to the team and he's been working with the planning team for the last year here. We also have Detective Zane Kelly, who's the World Petroleum Congress Planning Chief. He has 24 years with the CPS, with a background in organised crime intelligence and major events planning. He's also got crowd management and public safety unit experience and has deployed previously on WPC and G8 events. Lastly, we have Sheldon Scott, who's the inspector of our major events and emergency management section. He has 27 years of policing experience. He's certified as a critical incident commander from the Canadian Police College since 2014 and has experience with public safety unit, tactical unit, and our real-time operations centre. He also has been deployed to WPC previously and G8. Just as an introduction for them, we appreciate the opportunity to bring this forward to the commission, understanding that it is a large event, it's a worldwide event that will put Calgary on the centre stage and as such, it's important that we bring this forward for your governance oversight of our planning around that event. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to them to go through the presentation and we'll have answer any questions you may have.
Great, thanks very much Deputy. Alright, so my name's Jason Archibald, business strategist. I've been with CPS for eight years. I've worked on several major projects as a project manager, so I do have some project management experience under my belt. Just here to run through the presentation on World Petroleum Congress. If you could start the presentation, please. Great, thank you. Okay, so I'd like to start off by just talking a little bit about the role of CPC with governance of this project. The chair has already talked about this, but essentially the CPC Policy and Procedures Manual requires an open exchange of information, so we're here to share with you today and we'll be back again in the future. As already laid out, CPC has the responsibility of overseeing CPS so that we have the right policies in place that we're able to fulfil our regular policing obligations as well as the resources necessary for this event. So the organisation that's hosting the event is the World Petroleum Council. They're based in the UK and they conduct World Petroleum Congresses, so WPC for both for both the organisation and the congress every three years. So the event covers everything in the industry, but they do focus on industry management and management of social, economic, and environmental impacts within the sector. So to give some context on where this has all come from, the city of Calgary did put a bid in to host this event with the promise of supporting our response. So this event is a municipal responsibility. There's no provincial or federal involvement or support. Okay, the event itself will be hosted September 17th to 21st later this year, so we have about eight months. We're expected to, or the event is expected to draw a large crowds, potentially 15,000 attendees from over 100 countries. It'll put Calgary on the global stage and has the potential to draw protests and demonstrations as a result. So CPS is responsible for supporting the safety and security response. So we're not alone though, we're going to be working with a number of partners. We've got a number of city departments here that we'll be partnering with as well as external partners and a set of mutual aid agencies. The mutual aid agencies are other police agencies around Western Canada who will be sending resources to us to help with the operation. So we essentially have two sets of priorities and objectives. One is focused on staffing and the other is on the event. So on the staffing side, we're looking to secure support from city partners and from our external police agencies to essentially reduce impacts on the frontline and to ensure that officer wellbeing is taken into control or taken into consideration. The event's objectives are to support the safety and security response, design a scalable response driven by our intelligence data so we can scale up our response if things get out of hand. And we're planning to respond at two potential locations, so currently we're focused on Stampede Park and on City Hall. So we have reviewed a number of previous similar events and they have shown us that there are operational risks out there. So we're aware of those risks and we are taking steps to address those risks. We're also working with other law enforcement agencies to assess the intelligence situation and to inform our operational response. We're planning to address any gaps using our planning process as well as our incident command system. In terms of funding, the city of Calgary recently conducted an inventory as part of their 2023 to 2026 budget process. They have allocated funds to address the costs of hosting the event. The budget is being coordinated through the city of Calgary and we are a participating stakeholder in that process. Based on current intelligence, there is sufficient budget for this deployment. So in terms of our command structure, as I said earlier, the event is not facilitated through the federal or provincial sectors. So it's appropriate for CPS to maintain command of the event and to coordinate integrated security resources. So this will include other areas within the city of Calgary as well as other law enforcement agencies. We will be using the Incident Command System, ICS, which is a framework that law enforcement agencies use for planning or for responding to these types of major events. So if necessary, we have a contingency plan. It's not fully built yet, but it is coming. The contingency response will include essentially resources over and above the resources that are assigned to the event. So there will be a CPS contingent over and above the CPS members that are sent down to the event. There's a potential for additional mutual aid members to come in to support us. We'll have contact with the Ministry of Justice and the Ministry of Public Safety and Emergency Services and we will see court injunctions if necessary. On the project management side in terms of project planning, we have been working on this project for over a year now. We've achieved some milestones here in 2022, so we've approved our deployment plan, we've got our budget approved by the city and we've spent a bunch of time working on our staffing model. So in terms of the staffing model, we have communicated to our patrol members that this event is coming. We have put a block as well on vacation and training during that time. So also our members will be required to be available for deployment. So in that sense too, we'll have more members available in case of, you know, depending on how the situation unfolds. In terms of upcoming milestones, we're essentially going to be focusing on working out our planning details in the next couple of months. We've got some final staffing assignments that'll be sent out to our patrol members. We'll sign our mutual aid agreements. We'll do some staffing adjustments closer to the event. Right before the event, we'll make sure that all event and backfill members are adequately trained and supplied with equipment and then the event will be complete. So we will be back to CPC to present to the full commission on June 28th and then we'll come and present one last time right before the event on September 14th to the GNP Subcommittee. So in conclusion, the World Petroleum Congress project, it is a service priority. It has the full support of our executive, it's appropriately resourced, and it's on track for delivery of a well-run event. Alright, that's everything from my side. I think we're able to take questions now.
Alright, so I'll turn it over to commission members to ask any questions. You can use your hands. So Commissioner Siddiqui, please go ahead.
Thank you so much for that overview. I have two questions for you. Number one is I've noticed that you've blocked the services, sorry, CPS officers in terms of not taking vacation or training. What about surrounding police services and like the RCMP? Do you think you'll need them as well and have they blocked their schedules?
Alright, we will be bringing in support from those agencies. I don't know if they are placing corresponding blocks on their resources. So we'll be working out those details here in the next little while.
And then my second question is just how are you going to liaise with the large corporations and other countries who are sending like their CEOs and world leaders from different countries in terms of their security needs and how does that work with Calgary Police?
The plan is for the WPC Working Group to identify specific individuals that are coming over. There will be people from other countries that will have probably I'd say specific bodyguard details coming over. Our plan is to have Calgary Police Officer liaisons that will be in direct contact with them with their movements, where they're staying, if they're going out for dinner at certain restaurants and what those movements are. So if something were to unfold with them, that we'll have instant information relayed to our command centre as to who is involved and what the situation was and we'd have direct information flow. We won't be delayed. We're just trying to narrow down of how many people are coming and how many liaisons we'll have. And that's consistent with benchmarking that I've done with Houston that had it prior. They created liaison contingent that is, again, it's very similar to a VIP or dignitary protection programme, but we're just a liaison. We're not affording them any bodyguard or any protection like that. It's just a liaison to correspond with them on what their movements might be and how we can assist them.
Commissioner North-Pagan.
Yes, thanks for the presentation and it was very informative. I know you mentioned that you had a review of past events such as this one. The concern that I'm actually having is that, you know, I do have past experience in the event industry and we have different challenges that we're facing moving forward. And the thought of, I think you said 100, was it 15,000 participants from 100 different countries? And the fact of the matter is, we still have communities here in Calgary who are protecting themselves because we've got to remember the, you know, the removal of the COVID restrictions was actually a political move and not, you know, a public safety one. So, you know, some of these communities are still concerned and they're still protecting themselves from this COVID. And then the fact of the matter is, today we are dealing with real and current challenges in the event industry. I saw you saw, you said you mentioned SEMA. With SEMA's, I'm just curious to know, is this avenue being covered with all these participants coming in from different countries and our communities protected from this?
I think SEMA would be probably best positioned to answer that. I don't know what measures are taking. I know that we have been looking at venue, what specific happens at a venue, what is the screening process? We will be looking at who's flying over depending on if that's commercial airline or private airlines that'll be looked into as to who arrives. I think we resort back to what the, you know, the opinion of the medical health experts are as what we're allowed to enforce at that time. What is being, you know, predicted for what is the environment at that time for restrictions or not having any restrictions? We would default back to them and ask what is our role as a Calgary police service to assist in that? They're specific to certain venues and hotels. There's a host hotel that are going to be hosting most of them that they'll be at and identifying which ones they are. So at previous situations like this, they've had them locked down where just they're in those hotels, they're not all spread out in different hotels to this host and additional host hotels for them. And the venue, like I said right now with Jason's information is that it's the Convention Centre for an opening ceremony and then the Stampede Grounds for the venue.
Thank you for that response and just, I would, I think we should, if it be okay, that this commission receives some type of some type of information coming forward in that June update.
Maybe just to add on that Commissioner, with respect to SEMA, they are a key partner in the planning process of this. So with the large list of city resources that are, you know, at the table. So we are working closely with them moving forward on the overall plan for community safety.
Thank you very much and thank you for that question. Councillor, Commissioner Nice and Jordan.
Thanks for that presentation. I just have a question that's a little bit related to it. Your experience in having gone to some of these and have discussed with Houston and I believe it was in Sao Paulo before that. Your experience in having gone to some of these and have discussed with Houston and I believe it was in Sao Paulo before that. Those, especially the one in Houston, took place at a time where COVID was significant. So there wasn't as much movement as I suspect there's probably going to be with this one. So my question relates to the fifteen thousand. Does that include the additional demonstrators, the that type of thing that went? And not only this often results in increasing criminal element because they know that you guys are occupied at other at other things. So how much have you added on to the fact that Houston might have been a little bit quieter than what you might have anticipated for this one?
So we were very fortunate to go down to Houston and look at that. It was at the end of pandemic. It was just a couple of days of lifting restrictions. So they were very fortunate not having a big protest environment that I would say is probably supported and funded by external sources. So they were, again, very cooperative with us and sharing with us as to what they were experiencing and what they thought they'd have and what they were restricted to because of travel. What we've done since then is looked at, okay, what is it in changing the environment restriction? So we went to Montreal for COP fifteen as well and restrictions were open. So we looked at what are they getting for participants coming to look at that venue? There's an increase, but we're also monitoring to see, okay, from now until September, what is the environment in North America for attendees traveling to be at those venues, so we're watching and liaising with each one of them? So to your question, there is probably about fifteen thousand people attending the venue itself. Outside of that, what I anticipate other people coming? Yes, and I would think probably locally, we'll see people add on to that, which we've seen in two thousand. With WPC, we've seen that with G eight. We've seen people transition from different cause to cause to go out to gain attention to their event or their cause as well. So there will be people that will be monitoring with social media, open stuff to see, okay, what is it that we're seeing? Messages that are drawing attention that are the attending. That will be all put into our plan to assess what are our resources? How are we able to sustain this event and sustain normal operations in the city?
Thank you very much. I have one other final quote, Patricia Campbell.
Thanks very much, Chair. Appreciate the question from Commissioner Northbagen about what are the public health measures that may be necessary to support this program? I would actually branch on that and ask, what are the, thinking of the attendees and the the guests that we will have? What are the potential cybercrime risk potential? Do we have concerns about attendees who might deploy methods of human trafficking? And do we have concerns about existing human rights violators and their attendance here in Calgary?
So I get.
Sure, I can take that question. As you'll see in the in-camera agenda, we do have another Q and A, so that's probably more appropriate question for there.
Thank you. Yes, so one final question and choose this or the next conversation. The next briefing for us is June twenty-eighth, which is great. I would also ask just a consideration for how there's communication also with council and with other key stakeholder groups in the community. Just having known what happened with protests over the last few years, just to all the learnings that we have from that. If we can take those forward to continue the communication a little bit more broadly than just with commission as we go forward, I don't know if you have that in the plans already, but I think it needs to be there. And also encourage that while June twenty-eighth is in the calendar, if there's anything we need to know beforehand, I'm sure you'll come and make sure that we know that in advance. So any comments or I'll just leave that on the table.
Thanks, Chair Cornet. Taken for sure. We will be looking at that with our city partners. Hence, the budget even being allocated at that location. So there will be communication ongoing and we'll bring anything urgent forward.
Great. Okay, thank you. We have two more reports from the service in this section of the agenda. And so I'm going to ask that both those reports be presented and then we'll turn it over to questions at the end of the next two. So if we can go ahead with the crime update and I'll pass it back over to the service, Deputy Chief Cook.
Thank you, Chair. And Chair, thank you for your opening comments. First and foremost, in recognition of the tireless efforts of our members and acknowledging the true impacts to victims, families and the broader community and equally the impacts that it can have on our members. I think that acknowledgement and your understanding of the work that's happening within our community is greatly appreciated. So thank you for that. The reports have been submitted. I will try to highlight as best as I can with some relevant points. And again, these are ongoing updates that we present to you on a monthly basis. I'll start with the gun violence in relation to, we finished twenty twenty-two with a hundred and twenty-six shootings, which represents the highest number of shooting incidents since we began collecting data back in twenty fifteen. This number was thirty-three percent higher than twenty twenty-one and forty-five percent above the five-year average. In November and December twenty twenty-two, we saw a reduction in the pace of shootings, which historically we see in the months of November and December. By the end of November twenty twenty-two, we had seized a total of four hundred and sixty-five crime guns, which are firearms that were unlawfully used, possessed or stored. That's actually a reduction compared to twenty twenty-one, where we seized five hundred and twelve. Year to date, I'm pleased to report, not pleased, we have seven shootings. At this time last year, we were at twelve. Our last shooting in twenty twenty-two was December twenty-fifth and our first shooting of twenty twenty-three was a homicide on New Year's Day. All transitional homicides, we are at one homicide for twenty twenty-three. That's the incident I reported back on New Year's Day. By the end of twenty twenty-two, we had twenty-seven homicides in Calgary. Fifty-six percent, so fifteen of those homicides were a result of gun violence, which was the highest percentage of gun-related homicides in one year in Calgary. Ten of the twenty-seven homicides were determined to be organized crime or drug-related. And as we've reported to the commission before, historically homicides related to organized crime are historically hard to solve. Investigators were able to lay charges in seventy percent of the twenty twenty-two homicides, which is about our average, where we can get as high as seventy-eight. And as I've reported before, as years go on, our clearance rates continue to increase with our homicides because we don't stop pursuing the truth in unsolved matters. I'll just transition to a growing conversation within our community, certainly through Chiefs of Police at the Canadian Association of Chiefs of Police, Alberta Associations, the Chiefs of Police, our chief and this commission in around the advocacy around repeat offenders and the need for legislative changes in support of bail reform. Our offender management and organized crime section has identified more than eleven hundred offenders with organized crime ties who have been identified as having high risk to reoffend. Currently, we're monitoring three hundred and eighteen and we're stressed, stretched to our capacity with that. These offenders vary by crime type, however, all have demonstrated previous violence. Our OCOM, our Organized Crime Offender Management, is comprised of several teams who engage with and monitor offenders to prevent further victimization and recidivism. In some cases, officers are able to manage an offender's behavior without enforcement. That's our goal. However, there have been recent examples where enforcement is necessary to protect the safety of Calgarians or when offenders continually breach their court-imposed release conditions. This was the case when two offenders who had been known to have organized crime ties had a history of breaching conditions and had been involved in our ongoing city's violence. Despite being bound by a twenty-four-seven curfew, these two offenders were found to be carrying loaded concealed firearms while out for dinner with friends at a downtown Calgary restaurant. I will share the timeline and chronology for both. The first offender arrested July sixth, twenty twenty-two, arrested and charged with extortion. July eighth, twenty twenty-two, released on bail conditions two days later, including not to be in possession of weapons. September sixteenth of twenty twenty-two, same individual was arrested and charged in relation to a July twenty twenty-two shooting. October seventh, twenty twenty-two, this individual was released on bail conditions, including a twenty-four-seven curfew and not to be in possession of weapons. November seventeenth, this individual was arrested at a downtown restaurant while in possession of a loaded and concealed firearm. And he has been remanded and held in custody to this date with another appearance in February. The second offender, November fourth of twenty twenty-one, arrested and charged with multiple firearms and breach offenses. December eighth, twenty twenty-one, released on bail conditions, including a twenty-four-seven curfew and not to be in possession of weapons. August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, arrested and charged for breaching bail conditions. August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two, released on bail conditions two days later, including a twenty-four-seven curfew and not to be in possession of weapons. September fifteenth of twenty twenty-two, arrested and charged for breaching bail conditions. September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two, released on bail conditions, including a twenty-four-seven curfew and not to be in possession of weapons. November seventeenth, arrested at a downtown restaurant while in possession of a loaded and concealed firearm. And he has been held and remanded into custody. The second offender, since twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-two, we've completed approximately two hundred and seventy-four directed patrols to ensure that this member or this individual is abiding by his release conditions. As I stated earlier, we have over three hundred offenders that we're trying to monitor within our community and safeguard against community harm. Two hundred and seventy-four in and of itself is a significant number. But I've already described to you, this individual has been known to carry firearms and we're sending our members to the door to check, to see if they're abiding by their conditions. So the amount of hours that go into monitoring one offender take our members away from important proactive crime prevention within our community. These are just one, this is just one example that highlights the need for us to work collaboratively with our justice system to ensure that we have enough prosecutors and court resources to guarantee there are consequences for gun violence occurring in our city. As a result of collaboration from police and prosecutors, these offenders remained in custody pending further hearings. As I stated at the start, legislative reforms to the bail process involving violent repeat offenders and related firearms offenses is required. And from on behalf of Chief Newfeld in the service, we certainly appreciate the ongoing advocacy of the commission towards these legislative changes. That will be the conclusion of my summary. I'd be happy to answer any questions, including any questions I didn't cover that are referenced in the reports. I'll turn it over to Deputy Toffick.
Thanks, Paul, and thanks, Chair, for acknowledging some of the results that we've seen recently with respect to domestic violence reductions and the catalytic converter theft prevention initiative. As you'll see with the report that I submitted, there's a lot of detail in there, so I won't go into all of the nuts and bolts on that, but I will cover off some of the highlights. Certainly for the month of December, we did see a decrease, a mild decrease in violent incidents, approximately ten percent lower than the five-year average. When I look at the month of December, only across those crime categories in the table there, you'll see a lot of green. That's a good news story for us that things are trending down for December. Cumulatively for the year, though, you'll see that some are more neutral. The yellow means neutral. It doesn't mean it's a warning or anything like that, but it's neutral. So statistically not significant when you see the range of scores there. That said, as mentioned, the domestic violence incidents have have seen a continued reduction and we've seen that trend throughout twenty twenty-two. We're hopeful that that's a positive. I think in conjunction with the increase in domestic reporting, that helps provide perspective to it. Because if I had seen decreases in both, I'd probably be a little bit more concerned than understanding that the reporting is actually happening. So standbys to prevent the breach of the piece, getting police and other agencies in earlier, I think is a very good news story to try to prevent domestic violence. Paul already spoke to shootings and and gun violence, so I won't go there. With respect to property crime, break and enters, we have seen continued reductions there, which is is good news both on the residential side. We, in fact, we are forty-four percent below the five-year average for December, which was pretty much a record for the last six years and twenty percent below average for commercial. So that's that's a positive for us. For vehicle crime, we are also seeing reductions there continued, which is a positive, especially when we see things like catalytic converter thefts continuing. Everyone's seen in the media, the results that we saw in twenty twenty-two as compared to twenty twenty-one and some of the efforts that we're putting to that, which will continue into twenty twenty-three here. There certainly was a slight downward trend in social disorder as well, seven hundred twenty-eight fewer calls than average. But that might have been impacted by, we had a cold snap there in December and that can play a factor for some of that reporting. You'll note in the the report, there are some highlighted drug and gun-related investigations. Those are prioritized by our district operations teams and the general investigative units to make sure we follow through to hold offenders accountable as similar to what Paul indicated. You'll see the one from District Seven, where we laid more than forty charges involving two individuals after stolen vehicles, firearms, identity theft documents and more than two hundred thousand dollars worth of drugs were seized. In that one, we seized four assault rifles, a prohibited pistol, some body armor and some high-end vehicles and approximately one kilogram of fentanyl about at about a hundred thousand dollars. The community impact of a seizure like that is is significant. I put my mind to the number of overdoses that that might have prevented. Two individuals were charged accordingly with offenses in that one and investigators are still following through with that investigation. There was more than seven hundred individuals with identity documents, forty-eight businesses and a hundred vehicles related to that. So a big investigation. District Four had an operation as well. Then this one is a bit quicker, but no less significant in that it was a home invasion in Martindale involving multiple offenders using a sawed-off shotgun and a pistol attacking a male in his home. Investigators were led to some video evidence and that identified one offender. They ended up executing search warrants at a couple of different locations, seizing a twelve-gauge shotgun, ammunition, crossbow. A few days later, an additional search warrant resulted in recovering a three-D printed pistol, which I know is relevant, given recent discussions around three-D printing of of weapons. And as a result of that investigation, three individuals were charged with a total of thirty-one criminal code charges and a warrant put out for a fourth individual. The District Three operation in there, you see search warrants on a residence and two vehicles resulted in the seizure of three hundred thousand dollars worth of drugs, weapons, crack cocaine and and other evidence for further offending. Of course, the these investigations do take a fair bit of resources, but they're a good investment to get that type of property back in safe hands. Moving on to property crime operations and initiatives, the Citywide Catalytic Converter Theft Crime Prevention Partnership with Cal Tire, which we released publicly this past month, has seen a very positive uptake. We, in fact, have been reached out to by police agencies from B C to Ontario to see how we're running the program. Cal Tire has been a great partner in this initiative. I think they've been a little bit overwhelmed by the interest in getting the the etching on the catalytic converters. We realize that's not a panacea to solve the issue, but it's one step in a broad range of steps, none of which doesn't take away from the notice of motion yesterday at council. We will be continuing to work with council on that to look at other measures. We are engaged at the provincial level with other law enforcement agencies in looking at potential solutions to that issue, which is very real, not just in our jurisdiction. I highlighted a few B and E operations as well, just to show the contrast between residential break and enter offenders and commercial and how they often result in series. We have similar examples as to what Paul said around offenders who do a series of crimes. So we try to stay on top of those repeat offenders in in interest to prevent further offending. The traffic safety highlights, and I know, Chair, you spoke to the impaired driving enforcement checkstop program over the holidays, which unfortunately or fortunately resulted in some results there for us. If we look at the year in total from a traffic safety standpoint, nineteen fatal collisions. This surpassed the twenty twenty-one totals, however, was twenty-one percent below the twenty twenty totals. So we see a bit of a dip and flow with that. September was particularly high for us in twenty twenty-two, there were six in September, which I know there was also some very warm temperatures that month and we had a number of motorcycle fatalities that month. Certainly, our impaired driving focus that we put in conjunction with the Alberta Traffic Uh Alberta Traffic Safety Calendar Focus in both the months of July and December did net some results there. And we are seeing uh our efforts uh follow through there. I added a couple of links to some tra- traffic safety videos and those are just things that we are putting out as public education pieces. One that I thought was interesting that might be of interest for you is the one on traffic stops, you know, not everyone gets pulled over all the time, but when they do. What should they do and how should they act? That's a bit of an education uh uh YouTube video that will be used in presentations and such, just so people know. How to 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 really keep themselves safe and keep officers safe, even around the roadway and how we have to approach vehicles to keep us safe, so. That will conclude my uh overview from a crime update and safety update perspective, but uh certainly happy to take questions when we're ready to do so.
Thank you. Um we have one more, which is the anti racism update and is Katie online? Sorry, Deputy Chief McCallum.
Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Uh good afternoon, everyone. Uh thank you for the opportunity to provide a few brief updates. Uh as you heard, the chair mentioned the external Anti-Racism Action Committee is pleased to add four new members to our committee. These four new members who applied in twenty twenty one were selected from the shortlist of candidates. They were all interviewed prior to accepting the position and bring significant personal and professional experience to the committee. They attended our first meeting on January eleventh and their names are on our website with the remaining seven members of our committee. We've got a lot of work to do this year. We have made numerous commitments and have a journey map that has identified our ongoing initiatives. The postings for the eight civilian community mobilizers, the full time permanent positions approved by city council for the twenty twenty three. Twenty twenty six budget went live on December twenty second and closed on January sixteen. We're excited to build and incorporate the successful candidates into our service delivery. The mobilizers will also work closely with our advisory boards and A RAC committees. I'm actually thrilled to share that we received over four hundred applicants for these positions. We're going through the list now and hope to conduct interviews within the coming weeks. We have concluded our interviews for anti racism advisor position and our interviews are still ongoing in relation to the anti racism manager. Our anti racism website is up and running and I would like to extend my sincere thanks to Mount Royal University. For their creativity and initiative in supporting our anti racism efforts. Habitus and action dignity have concluded their engagement with the community. They are now meeting internally with our members. And that report should be completed at the end of Q one or the beginning of Q two. A couple of brief highlights with respect to our diversity resource team. They have worked, continued to work closely with our partnership with the Youth Link Interpretive Centre. And have facilitated building safer community presentations at several locations throughout and around the city. The team has also provided a large amount of training on cultural sensitivity to victims assistance support team volunteers. Some of you may recall that one of the town halls we held last year, there was a recommendation for a seniors portfolio. And I'm happy to announce that we have in fact implemented and stood up a seniors uh advisory board portfolio. With respect to our crisis response project, we have continued to work closely with numerous partners to assist in Calgary's crisis transformation. As many of you know, we have seen early successes with the C nine one one, two one one partnership, where a fourth alternative is provided to callers. The downtown outreach and addictions partnership, where they are assisting us in dealing with individuals who are needed of housing and other assistance. And our enhancement of our mobile and crisis teams as well as the crisis mobile response teams. We're very fortunate to have such a great relationship with many partners, including Alberta Health Services. Were truly instrumental in many of these initiatives. As many of you know, we are currently working with the Alex Health Centre. In which we have joined together to attend citizens' needs that may not be specifically police related. These teams are expected to deploy on February thirteenth. We've also been working very hard with many partners to implement the real time integrated health and addiction center. And a more report on all of this will be forthcoming in the next couple of months. And as already mentioned by Chair Cornet, uh February is Black History Month. As part of our ongoing efforts towards becoming an anti racist organization, we are honored to participate in. And acknowledge Black History Month. During Black History Month, we will be sharing content both internally and externally over the course of the next four weeks to highlight the past. Present and future. We will begin by laying the foundational information on how Black History Month came to be and highlighting notable Black Canadians. Both provincially and federally. During the second week, we will highlight different advisory boards as well as the community partners that we have strong relationships with. And the work that they do further to further our relationships, but also shine a light on how they are contributing to the success. History and awareness of the Black community in Calgary. In week three, we will share an updated internal like timeline of the experience of Black CPS members. Connecting with archives and sharing milestones. This includes sharing the great personal videos created last year. In week four, the Office of Respect and Inclusion will be hosting a conversation with panelists that will include Inspector Martin. On the journey of leading our anti racism work in the service. As well as more personal stories from other Black members on their lived experience. We acknowledge that systemic racism in institutions such as policing always hasn't had positive outcomes for our Black community. We remain committed to fostering strongly relationships with the Black community and celebrating our successes. Thank you, Chair. Back to you.
Thank you very much and thank you for all of those reports. Um with that, I will turn it over to commissioners for questions. On any one of those reports and I have the sun in my eyes, so um excuse the hand. Um so I'll start with Commissioner Campbell and then Lynch Proctor Siddiqui and we'll go from there. Great, that one actually, the other one in the middle.
Perfect. Thanks very much, Chair. I think we're doing a little bit of housekeeping at the same time. Yes. Um two questions, uh both in uh section five point two. Um uh one for Deputy Cook and then one for Deputy Toffick. Um in the in the crime update, um for the view of investigative support. Um the the cyber cybercrime team hosted a fundamentals of of cryptocurrency seminar. Um CPS has a a core competency and a particular skill set and talent in investigations of cybercrime. Uh would you please speak to the impact of cybercrime on Calgarians? So fraud, etcetera. Um I believe the the material in the report um spoke uh uh. Federally and provincially, and I was hoping to have just a local perspective there.
Uh thank you for the uh the question, Commissioner. I think we've all, you you know, in contemporary times, we know the. The harms and the risks that are prevalent within cyber. I think our greatest efforts are. In around education and prevention and it's a commitment that we have. Uh the speed of cyber and the advancements in cyber is a challenge, I think, for all law enforcement agencies. Uh but the. In isolation, police cannot alone combat combat the harms within the cyberspace. And as we've briefed the commission previously, I think the greatest leverage is within the expertise within the community. And partnerships uh with either private companies, academia and research. Into making sure that we're doing the best that we can to reduce the harms within the cyberspace. I hope that answered your question.
Sort of, but um we'll we'll get there. Um okay, Deputy Toffick. Um there in your update, there wasn't um a a explicit update on the pharmacy robberies. Um is this still an issue or have the actions been effective in stemming this particular situation?
Thanks for the question, Commissioner, and I know uh robbery section which falls under Deputy Cook, we've worked collaboratively on it though. We certainly have seen a reduction in those occurrences since we had the task force working earlier in the year, so. We have not been seeing the same number or frequency. We are still following up cases, though we've had some recent cases where charges have been laid in relation to. More dated files, so we we aren't seeing the same trends right now.
Thanks very much. Um back to Chair.
Thank you very much. Um Commissioner Lynch Proctor.
Thank you. I think I put my desk back together now. Um Deputy. Um Cook, I had two questions on um gun violence. The first is, I wondered if you could provide an update on three D printed guns, trends, um prevention strategies, anything that's new?
Again, probably nothing new, Commissioner, uh but we have seen an increase in homemade, home manufactured firearms. Uh from my SMEs, I've been told not to talk about ghost guns or three Ds because there's many different ways. That people are, individuals are unlawfully manufacturing firearms. Specifically to three D printed guns in relation to the receivers. Uh we've seen an increase in twenty twenty two. When we are dealing with seizures in single digits in like twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. I think we were up to about seventeen seizures last year. Uh again, there's a national conversation around uh firearms legislation and how to uh best impact. Uh those types of firearms within our community. As many of you know, the reason why three D printers are prevalent or becoming more prevalent. Is they're manufacturing the receiver, which is the controlled regulated piece under law. The barrels and the slides, so the top part of a firearm is not, so those are obviously obvious legislative opportunities. To try to reduce that. Uh last week, we had a national uh meeting in and around. Uh homemade manufactured firearms. There was a question asked, I believe, through one of the subcommittees in and around, almost like what we did with pill press through the opioid. Uh pandemic. But again, three D printers have been around since about two thousand and eight and have tremendous lawful legitimate use within our uh community. So our firearms experts don't feel that would be the best way to tackle the issue. It would be more in and around. Making sure that there's regulation around the slides and the barrels that's currently not in place.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um my second question is around um. Uh the information that you provided on repeat offenders, it was staggering and and thank you for those details and for walking through some very. Uh specific examples and and so that we can all understand the impact this this is truly having on CPS resourcing. Um wanted to better understand the advocacy side of this because that's our role. And you talked about uh the need for legislative reform around bail, uh bail hearings, bail process. For violent offenders and then also greater court and prosecution resources. And those are two very different things. So I wondered if we could, if you could just help us out, you know, what what's having a greater impact? Is it the legislation or is it the resources? And and maybe one way to get at that is to understand. Is the experience in Calgary any different from other large cities across, you know, the country? Because it was obviously federal legislation, but I'm trying to better understand the resourcing impact locally. Thank you.
Uh thank you for the question and uh I know the chief will be able to speak to this. I will try and I will stand corrected if I'm off base here. Uh I know Chief Newfeld has taken a leadership position on this throughout. As has, as I stated, the Canadian Associations and Chiefs of Police dating probably all the way back to two thousand and eight. With resolutions and issue papers. I think along the way, every police leader in Canada is experiencing. Similar challenges within their communities, but I think all police leaders also understand the complexity to the issue. And at every stage of the justice system, legal system, there's probably opportunities. So in. Relation to policing, as we've talked numerous times, it's another crime that we're not simply going to enforce our way through. And there's opportunities, whether it's staffing with crowns. Whether there's additional resources to offender management within community, if there's opportunities with our bail partners, are there opportunities with corrections? So I think there's opportunities all the way along each step of the process. Our greatest efforts will always be in early intervention and prevention and there's opportunities there. One of the things that's being talked about recently is more in relation to the repeat offenders, those chronic individuals that every law enforcement comes across. And are there additional opportunities there? One of the ones that's been talking about at the C A C P and with all premiers to a letter to the Prime Minister. Is in relation to reverse onus in relation to fire some specific firearms offenses. I can share with the executive director, there is a letter from the C A C P, the letter from the premiers. Uh Chief Newfeld will be able to speak on his position, uh but I think it's a matter of. We all have the same challenges and we're trying to be united in what is going to be the most effective throughout the system.
Yeah, thanks, Paul. Just to build on that, I think there's a real opportunity in terms of advocacy there to to sort of unite. Um you know, all parts of the system around uh this very important issue. So for instance, um. The police associations at the provincial level, the national level, the advocacy groups or the the uh governance groups. Uh provincially and nationally, the police unions, everybody sort of agrees on some of the key issues around this. And so I think there's some real opportunities right now. Um given some of the devastating things we've seen happen in uh the number of police officers that have been injured and killed. And then also just the notion of the crime and safety issues we're seeing in the cities. So I think I think it is a complex problem. I think Bill C seventy five had some unintended consequences. I think as that was sort of going into the system, we hit COVID. I think for good and valid reasons, uh correctional facilities had to be thinned out so that there wasn't as many people in there as well. Uh that. Uh required some individuals to be released back into the community early or maybe some folks not held in custody that might otherwise have been because of overcrowding issues. And then Jordan and timeliness and and files, the crown because of resources often has to prioritize uh violent crime, which we all understand. But then you do end up with individuals who are either involved right across the spectrum or. Um individuals who are involved who are repeat property crime offenders who do still bring harm to the community. Aren't, don't seem to be getting the same attention. So I think there are some real opportunities right now. We're actually working on uh an op ed. Uh right now uh around the issue, but also uh speaking to uh the associations as well as governance. About how we could maybe take some positions, you know, to sort of inform the debate around this, because I think it's a it's a golden opportunity right now to be able to raise the issues. That are that are so obviously out there.
Thank you. Commissioner Siddiqui, you have additional? No. And we got the Commissioner North again?
Uh yes, thank you. Um uh this is, this is a comment towards the crime that crime trends update you just uh supplied. And you know, I'm really glad that you brought up the fact that there are other stakeholders at play when it comes to these uh crime trends. Uh for a long time, CPS was getting the sole blame of, you know, putting these offenders back into the. You know, into the prisons, but it it is, it is a, you know, a provincial and there are other stakeholders involved. Now, one part I would add into this is that this is a community effort. If we're gonna see these crime trends to continue to, you know, go in a direction. That the community wants them to see them to go into. So not just the uh provincial and the prosecutors and the court. We need the community involved as well to actually, you know, work in cooperation with the community. You know, with the CPS to ensure that these offenders are taken off the streets, but also. That continued effort by CPS to ensure that we have that relationship built with the communities. Um with that being said, we're gonna continue to advocate for the CPS on any avenue that we can. And hopefully we can all get on the same page with that. Um my question now goes to the anti racism, uh that'd be Deputy Chief McClellan. Um I I I see you received the uh CPS TP back in nineteen eighty five. And I do know who Joe Croshu Croshu Senior is. He's actually from my community and he was uh an elder. You know, very significant elder from the Biguny community. I'm just wondering why it has taken so long. For you to to put that TP up in front of the uh in front of headquarters.
Thanks, Commissioner, for your question. Um I can tell you that there has been lots of conversations around this and in fact. Uh unveiling our sacred space. Um I can share with you that the last conversations I had with the team is simply around. Um working through those logistics with our partners and with our elders and um. More or less working on a timeline that was that was that fit their their needs. That's my, that's my understanding, but I will confirm that and get back to you with additional details.
Thank you, Deputy Chief. Back to you, Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions? So Commissioner Mallon and then uh Commissioner Nice and Jordan.
There, there. Thank you. I have two questions, one for Deputy Toffick.
There, there. Thank you. I have two questions, one for Deputy Toffek and it's about neighborhood crime. And certainly, what you hear a lot in the neighborhoods is concern about catalytic converters for sure, but also like car prowlings, porch theft, garage break-ins. And I've heard people say, I always say, when people tell me that stuff, I say, make sure you record it to the police and you got video. Is that useful? Because sometimes they say the police say there's not much they can do. But is it still useful for people to bring forward that information, those videos or whatever to the police?
Thanks very much for that question. It's absolutely useful. I'll I'll explain kind of why in the absence of that information and you may think that it's only one occurrence, but there could have been five, ten, fifteen, twenty in a neighborhood. And unless that gets reported, we don't have that intelligence then to direct our operations to focus in an area on on proactive work. So it is very useful. Although not every crime is going to lead to ultimate arrest charges and such. But that information does benefit us. It also benefits us in working with community. I know there's a tendency with social media groups and chat groups to share information with neighborhoods, but maybe not then send it to police. We need to have that information as well. We are tapped into those groups often through this community resource officers, but to have the data for us really helps us inform our operations.
Okay, thank you. My second question is for Deputy McClellan and it relates to the cultural brokers or rather the mobilizers. I, recent conversations have been very much focused on, police want to get back or do the policing and have partners do the ancillary work. So I just wondered why we're hiring the mobilizers in-house versus having a partner who already works in cultural brokerage in communities to do that work.
Thanks, Commissioner, for your question. Appreciate that. So we had lots of conversations around this and really this was the transformation of our advisory boards. And so we had conversations with our advisory boards, with Habitat and Action Digity, with many of our community partners. And through those conversations, it was felt that this was the best method for us to hire these individuals. Of course, we will continue to reassess and include all of those folks at the table. But again, this this wasn't done in isolation. We didn't have many of our partners at the table and really it goes back to, as I said, when we looked at the advisory boards over the last several years and how we wanted to enhance and improve them and what we really wanted these community mobilizers to do and work with us and be out in the community as part of our ambassadors. We just felt that this was the best, the best way to go about hiring these these individuals. But as I said, it's something new for us and we will continue to assess and review as we move forward.
Okay, thank you, because it seems like an awful lot of extra work in your portfolio, which is already busy. And certainly there are social agencies who have been doing this for years.
Well, thanks. Appreciate those comments. And the diversity of resource team is actually happy to be having these additional individuals on to our teams. We think that they will be able to assist us with some of the events that we often have to go to ourselves. And we're really looking forward to kind of those boots on the ground of being linked and you know, working closely with us to bring the information and the trends and the issues that are going on in the community. So we actually see it as being able to hopefully take some of the work off our plate. And yeah, we're excited to move forward. It's something new for us. As I said, over four hundred applications and we've got lots, lots and lots of interest and even every, every advisory board this topic comes up. So lots of excited people to see where this goes and we're fairly optimistic that this is going to be very successful.
Okay, thank you. Will you report on progress through one of the committees or back to commission or where were we here updates on that?
Absolutely. I will be happy to provide the regular updates through the ERAC Subcommittee.
Okay, thank you.
Just a real quick add, Commissioner Mallon, on this too. I really like the idea of this because, as you recall, we had the conversations with the Calgary Alliance for the Common Good with respect to the Indigenous portfolio about adding more officers. And the one thing that the community often complains about is that those officers ultimately cycle out. And so we thought, we have officers who represent the police service to the community. But what a great idea to have members of the community that represent the community to the police as well and to have them work in tandem. So we had, through CSIF, if you recall, we had a pilot project with that. They were temporary positions though, and unfortunately, we had some awesome, awesome people that came in and worked really well with the officers. There was a real synergy there that was to the benefit of the community. And then, of course, we lost them. And they were great people, but we probably never should have thought we would retain them in temporary positions. So by creating full-time positions, I think this will be really, really good. We've got some people that have been attached to our diversity advisory boards for years and years and years that have given endless hours and they often say, we do this for free. And now there is opportunity for people to be able to come in and be compensated for the the level of commitment they've shown for years and years and years. So so I think it's a real opportunity.
I think it's an awesome program. I was just wondering, you know, about a partner rather than police, but we'll see how it goes. Thank you. Commissioner Nice and Jordan, thank you. I'm just going to build on the cybercrime question from Commissioner Proctor. The, this is a growing area throughout all of Canada internationally, provincially, wherever you want to do it. And I fully understand that we don't have the answers within the CPS. You alluded to last time, the last meeting, that you were working in partnership with the University of Calgary. And I would really be interested in hearing how that partnership is actually being actioned and what that will bring in terms of expertise into the CPS because this is an area that, you know, there are, there are citizens that are being affected and it in turn affects everything in our community. So we can say it's national, international, but we've got to still have that response within our own municipality and our own city. So that's, that's the first question. I do have another one, but.
Thank you for, I completely agree with all of your comments and I'm not in a position to report the effectiveness and the efficiency that it's created at this point, but we'll certainly bring that back. The other thing that was updated on is not only with academia locally within Calgary, but subject matter experts and corporate Calgary and other business that are in this space every day. Because we recognize in law enforcement, we have limitations within our agencies. Whether it's, one of the things that we have challenges with right now is retaining our sworn officers once they get trained and to a certain proficiency. So we are trying to leverage across the community locally and also internationally, nationally for the best response to cyber and the harms that it brings. But it's specific to the pilot with the University of Calgary. We can bring that back.
Thank you. And my second question relates to the repeat offenders. Again, staggering information from my perspective. You identified in there that it's your, these individuals are organized crime ties. I would assume, or maybe that's an incorrect assumption, that you would also look at repeat offenders that don't have organized crime ties. I assume there's a few of those. And the second part of that is, are we leveraging technology? You know, having people drive by, having them make sure that, you know, they're they're home when they're supposed to be. But is there an emphasis on using technology to try and eliminate some of those two hundred and forty seven visits you make to the individual?
Again, thank you for the questions. I was remiss not to mention or highlight that offender management is overlaying our entire service. From frontline patrol officers to dedicated units, whether it's within high-risk offenders or whether it's with our home team in relation to violent, high-risk domestic subjects or in our org crime section, where we're committed to prioritizing those offenders out of the eleven hundred that have connections to org crime. We're managing around three hundred and eighty that we prioritize. But there's prolific property offenders that Chad's area is dealing with daily. As far as the technology piece, I'm not exactly sure what you're referring to. But I can tell you, like, if it's things like electronic monitoring and GPS, there is, that's not a failsafe. I can tell you that I will describe to you more likely in Cameron where it's a false sense of offender management.
Thank you. Thanks very much. And thank you for all of the questions. I have one last question on the same topic. Not, not so much a question, it's just a thought perhaps to bring forward, but the the context that you provided and the examples, those two that you described, the chronology of was was excellent and gives us a really good sense of how things work. And I would take that just to a thought that it raised with the staggering numbers. Is there a way, as you go forward, that you can provide us and therefore the community a bit of an understanding even more to quantify a little bit around how much time and effort this takes? I understand that, you know, the information's out, it may be a whole bunch of members who only spend fifteen minutes a day or whatever. But if there's a way of trying to put a little bit of a quantitative measure, and I don't even want to say quantitative, but an intuitive measure in terms of how much that takes. Because the the other side of what we hear a little bit is when complaints are brought to a district or they're put online, people don't see any response, but but that's understandable because there's so many that come forward. So it's just trying to provide the community as a whole with a better understanding that, based on this particular report, we now have about how much effort and focus it takes of any individual officer or group of officers in a particular area. So I'm not sure I'm articulating that very well, but this is great. And then how do we take this information so people will have a better appreciation of what all of the officers are doing in a given shift or period of time?
I I think we could capture it. I know it's later in the year when our organized crime offender management section comes back for a presentation in around the restructure and the reorg, in around trying to be more flexible and responsive to some of the, to the gun violence and the offenders. So we can certainly try through our our analysts, try to quantify this for you in and around the workload. Because I tried to stress in my opening statement is that offender management is just one responsibility that we have. We would much rather be proactive in our activities with the community than doing enforcement. So we can try to bring that back when we bring the presentation back. I just don't have those numbers now. I can tell you how many direct patrols we did on that one individual. But again, I said, we're, we've prioritized about three hundred and fifty.
And 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 I just want to be very careful about not actually asking for additional reporting in terms of extra numbers. It's more the sense and the qualitative effort that goes into this as opposed to adding one more set of numbers that have to be compiled and presented because it's it's the intuitive sense of the volume, I think, that we're looking for. Yeah. Thank you. Good. With that, I don't see any other questions for these reports. So I would like to thank you for all of the presentations and the information that has been provided. And we'll move on to the other agenda items in this section of the meeting. There is section six point one, which is executive director support. However, there's no additional information to provide on that one today. Representative Updates is Agenda Item Seven. And so for that, I will go first to Commissioner Siddiqui for the report from the Canadian Association for Police Governance.
There's no report this month, but there'll be a complete one next month.
Okay, yes, these and just for information, these are commissioners also represent our commission on various other associations and committees, so that that's why we're going through this. Commissioner Zhang is not available right now and he is a member of the Alberta Association for Police Governance and we'll hear from him later. And I will say that there was nothing to purport from the Calgary Police Youth Foundation, which I am a member of. And finally, I will ask Commissioner North again if you have updates from Alert.
Yes, Chair, I attended the meeting last week, virtual meeting and C A C is looking to, we've actually incorporated a liaison between the Board of Directors and ourselves to, so we can formalize and actually put a framework into our committee. We are looking to be more engaged, whether than just reviewers of, you know, issues like the business plan. So we will be attending an in-person meeting on February eighth in Canmore where the C A C will be having a meeting with the Board of Directors to discuss these issues that we've addressed, we've brought up.
Thank you very much. Thank you for that. With that, that is the end of the presentations and reports for today. So we will now move on to the section where we invite public guests who've registered to speak to do so. Our public participation process is designed to balance the desire to hear from the public with the need to keep meetings a reasonable length. Those of you who registered to provide a presentation will have four minutes to speak, followed by commissioners having an opportunity to ask brief clarifying questions. For those who registered to ask a question, there are two minutes to speak, followed by a member of the commission or the Calgary Police Service having two minutes to respond. Please keep your comments to the topic you provided when you registered. We also cannot discuss a complaint without a with or about a specific employee or interaction with the police. If you'd like to discuss those complaints against an officer or other employee, please contact our Public Complaint Director or the Calgary Police Service Professional Standards Section, so it can be properly addressed. I would also like to thank everyone who took time to send us written submissions prior to this meeting. There were several and they have been provided to everyone on the commission and we appreciate the input insights and the time that it took to put those forward. And finally, a reminder to members of the media that we will hear from the public first and then we'll hold the media availability for you, which will follow that. So I will ask if you can put through the first speaker, please.
Thank you, Chair. Our first public presenter is Mr. Eddie Su. And he has a question around how the Police Act reforms will help address systemic racism affecting Calgarians and Asian community. Mr. Su, I think you should be able to unmute. Excellent. Please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So it's great to know that with the update from the chair, thank you so much for your very good explanation on the big change that are coming to the police oversight that actually make us the Asian community actually pretty excited about like how to enhance the accountability and transparency for the police, especially in preventing the Asian being the victim for the systematic, potential systematic racism of the CPS. So just a question to the police chief or the police officers and how do you think that the new police reform can help address the problem of altering all this? Especially when like some Asian community members have personally experienced making the, unfortunately, they have to complain about the police misconduct that stem from racism, discrimination and non-responsive to the Asian community members' report for the, for the like property related crime. So yeah, so actually that had been personal experience and and fun to be like lack of, lack of, not lack of, like had improved, improvement room for further responsive and transparency. So just want to get your, get your wheel on like how that will probably be helping that the status quo can be changed for the better. Thank you.
So, Mr. Su, I think if I understand your question correctly, it's what implications you think there might be from the Police Act with respect to difficulties the Asian communities is, is having with the police service. I I will add, I will offer one piece from the Police Act that we have seen so far was an expectation in the act that every municipality will have a safety and anti-racism plan. I'm not sure those are the exact descriptors that are used, but that that is an expectation that will now be written into the legislation, which hasn't been so far. So that's one thing that's happening. I don't know if there are other Um, so that's one thing that's happening. I don't know if, uh, there are other things. We, we still have to see the regulations and the other things that are coming out of that. But, um, I'll ask, uh, Chief Newfeld if there's any other comments that he would like to make.
Sure. Thanks, Chair, and thanks, Mr. Su. I think just at a high level, a couple of things that come to mind is that the act itself was, uh, predicated on eight guiding principles. And a lot of those, I think, are things that we would agree with, uh, all agree with around the need to provide safety and security. The need to safeguard fundamental rights for everybody. So those are, um, and, and to, uh, to make sure that the actions are rooted in, you know, human rights and, and the charter of rights and freedoms. Um, I think the other piece is there's an expectation for increased consultation around community safety plans, as you mentioned, and the EDI plans. And then I think the other piece to, just to, just to close it out is just the fact that if you have members of the community who may not be completely comfortable dealing directly with the police service that they have the issue with, uh, the concern about, the fact that the investigations now will actually be carried out by somebody who's, you know, would maybe perhaps be seen to be more objective. Uh, and that may build in a level of comfort. I think those are probably three pieces that the new act, uh, might help in that regard. But as you say, there is more to come in terms of the regulations and and how it actually flows out. But I think those are three obvious pieces responsive to your question, Mr. Su. So thank you for it.
Thank you very much. Are there any other speakers?
Yes, Chair. So the next speaker is, uh, Mr. Raj, uh, sorry Raj Kamarikatan. And I will, uh, unmute him here. He has a uh, presentation he'd like to offer thanking the commission and the service. Uh, Mr. Kamarikatan, you should be able to speak now.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, please go ahead.
Yeah. Um, I'd like to take, uh, I'd like, like to thank the police commission for allowing me to speak. My presentation title is to say thank you. And the topic of my presentation is CPS recruitment reform and the role of our elected officials and commission. At the end of twenty twenty-one, I had raised concerns about the process to which police commissioners were selected. My reasoning was there are serious problems in our community and we are not, and are we getting the right representation with experience and oversight? I don't believe we are and I stand by that. The right conversations are not being had. However, I always have said I have nothing against individual commission members. They're established normal people. It's the process to which I'm concerned about. I tried to take this further and take this case to elected official. My concerns of crime discrimination, representation and bias were ignored. In my frustration, I spoke at this commission last February as a citizen. There are serious issues in our community and these are best resolved by police officers from the community they are from. But we can't do that. So I use my own example. So I worked for the UK Home Office and with multiple law enforcement agencies, national and international organizations. So when I spoke last year, I expressed my frustration to ask why it was easier for Canadian high school graduate to become a CPS officer than me. Why do I have to go through so many barriers despite being a Canadian citizen? My British English, my UK Canadian work experience and education. The things that would have been advantageous have been barriers for me in pursuing to be a police officer. I was contacted right away by Mr. Rory Thompson and he introduced me to several other members. He invited me to meet. We sat down, identified the barriers I had faced. He built a case to take on the issue. I was impressed by the standards to which he worked at. This was comparable to the high standard I'd worked with the British Civil Service. Long story short, barriers were identified and solutions were made by, uh, Rory Thompson. Last summer, this was brought to the attention of the, uh, Minister of Justice for sign-off. Since then, recruitment from marginalized communities are up substantially. And I'm sure Rory Thompson can update you on those numbers if need be. I look forward to the new offices connecting with local communities. I couldn't be a police officer because of nonsensical barriers. But I really hope the new recruits can build a career, connect with the communities, raise a family with job security, do the things only dreamed of that I can't do now. One big benefit of local policing has been overlooked. Local offices build local intelligence. That is, I believe, how we deal with some of the most serious issues and bridge barriers. But I should never have been put in a situation where I've had to bypass elected officials. This should have been taken on by them and championed by them and not me. I ask what the point of these officials, if I'm doing all the work and having to bypass you all. This does not look good and brings the integrity of the municipal institution into question. City councils are the gateway for its citizens, but from my experience, they're behaving like gatekeepers on legitimate evidence-based cases. To our elected officials and commission, we are not black, we are not white, we are not First Nation. We are South Asian and we want better representation of our issues and for them not to be hijacked under different banners. As a member of the Eastern community and Punjabi community, including the British, specifically Buddhist, Sikhs, Muslims and Hindus, we want to collaborate and work on the issues of racism, discrimination, serious organized crime. And I believe this is how you do it. This case was a great example of the CPS taking concerns and working to resolve them. So to the Chief Constable Mark Newfield, Rory Thompson and other members of CPS that worked with me on this issue, I say a big thank you.
And I will say thank you for bringing that information and the updates and the recognition forwards. So thank you very much for your participation this afternoon. Much appreciated. And I will ask if there are any other speakers?
There are not, Chair. That is all.
Thank you. With that, um, we will end the public participation and move over to the media availability. Um, as, uh, mentioned previously, um, anyone can stay and listen to this as you like. Um, we will have the questions to the media. They are, um, online as opposed to in person. And after we finish this part, there will be a break and then we'll reconvene. So, um, Director Oddland, can you put through the first person?
Uh, certainly can. And, um, for members of media, we'll just take a moment to quickly rejig the room here and have the chief head over by the chair. Um, and if you just want to raise your hands in Zoom, we will, we'll call on you. Uh, we do need you to also include your media outlet. And so if you do not have a media outlet by your name, we, we won't be able to call on you. Uh, Darren Cross, we will start with you. Just give us a quick moment here. Okay, Darren, go ahead, please. We can't hear you if you're speaking. So I'm showing Darren, uh, Crow says unmuted, but I'm not hearing him. Um, so we can move on to the next. There, there's someone else who has her hand up, but unfortunately they don't have any outlet by them. So we'll give Darren a moment here. Okay, Chair, I don't think we have any, any more people lined up and I don't know where Darren Cross from LiveWire is, so we can arrange for questions from him later on. I think that concludes our media availability.